Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 23rd, 2022 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. This meeting is being conducted by remote participation only, and in a moment, I'll read you a few points about that. Please also note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. And also, if anyone is recording the meeting, could you please let us know it's all right to record the meeting, but you do need to notify us? I'll give you a few seconds in case you're muted. Okay, as I mentioned, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation only in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access using Microsoft Teams or by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 893-117-593-pound. That's 893-117-593-pound. And as I mentioned, you can also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams by using the link in the agenda that's posted on the town website. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And also, just to note, in accordance with town policy, the public can speak on any agenda item or business item during the meeting when recognized by the chair. A few additional procedural points about our remote participation. We'll begin with a roll call of all planning board members. And also, if I could ask everyone who's connected to the call if you would mute your microphones and also disable your videos unless you are speaking. So if everyone could mute your microphones and disable your videos, that's with the exception of the planning board members who should mute your microphones if you're not speaking, but do leave your videos on. All right. So then also, after an agenda item has been considered by the planning board, I will ask for questions or comments from the public, from non-board members. And when recognized by the chair, please repeat your name before you begin speaking. And if you've connected by telephone, please also repeat the last four digits of your phone number. And we just want to be very clear that we can identify all speakers during the meeting. And as I mentioned, after the agenda, after an agenda item has been discussed by the public body, which in this case is the planning board, I will ask if there are non-board members who have comments or questions. Also, all votes tonight taken by the planning board will be taken by roll call and will end the meeting with a verbal confirmation of adjournment and will note the time of adjournment. So let's begin with our roll call of planning board members. Art Spru, are you present?
Art Spru, present.
Bob Wurzhafter?
Present.
I think, okay, I think you're muted. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, present.
Great. Warren Shane?
Warren Shane, present.
And has Tom Gagin joined us yet? Tom, are you on the call? Okay. And Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, present.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I am also present. So hopefully, Tom will join us soon. He did say he would be coming. Also, I should just ask if there are any planning board members who need to recuse themselves on, from any items on tonight's agenda.
This is Bob Dubus. I have to recuse myself on 1218 Main Street, but I don't think that's going to be a problem because I see that they wanted a continuance.
Right. Thank you. All right. So let's begin with our first agenda item. And that will be the minutes from April 25th. Does anyone on the planning board have any corrections or additions to the draft minutes that were prepared? If there's no corrections or additions, could I have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Bob Dubus will second.
Roger Griffin will second. Okay.
Okay, thank you. So let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru abstaining. I was not present for the April 26th.
My apologies, Arthur. And Bob Wurzhafter?
Approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approve.
Warren Shane?
Warren Shane approve.
And it's also, Tom Gagin was also absent. I don't think he's connected yet at any rate. Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approved.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve the minutes. Next item on our agenda is an approval not required. It is a matter that we've already reviewed in a previous meeting. This is 53 Raccoon Run and 48 Salt Marsh Way. And there were some minor changes that were made by land court. So that's why this matter is before us again. It's an approval not required. And Thad, are you here? Could you explain to us what the changes were that were made by land court?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thad Eldridge, East Southeast, two inches and six square feet in the perimeter. We're modified by the land court after going back and forth a few times. The division parcels themselves did not change. It was all on the exterior between the two lots. And it was just a, there was a two-inch discrepancy with 48 Salt Marsh Way from the old, old plan. And that's now resolved.
All right, great. I'm just going to ask if any other planning board members have any questions or comments for that? As I mentioned in our November 8th, 2021 meeting, this approval not required came before us and we already endorsed it. There were just those minor changes made by land court. Any questions from board members?
No.
All right. So if there are no questions or comments from any planning board members, may I have a motion to endorse the A and R plan entitled Division Plan, Chatham, Massachusetts, dated July 27th, 2021, and prepared by Thad Eldridge?
Roger Griffin motion to endorse.
Thank you. May I have a second to that motion?
I'll wait for seconds.
I'm sorry, who gave the second?
Bob Wurzhafter.
Thank you. So let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru approve.
Bob Wurzhafter?
Bob Wurzhafter approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approve.
Warren Shane?
Warren Shane approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approved.
And is Tom Gagin connected yet? I don't think so. This is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. Thank you, Thad.
Thank you much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Thad.
All right. The next item on our agenda, we have some site plan approvals amended. The first one is for 1218 Main Street. The applicant has requested a continuance to our July 11th meeting. Bob Dubus has recused himself. May I have a motion that we continue this matter to our July 11th meeting?
Art Spru, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second to that motion?
Warren Shane, I second.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru approve.
Bob Wurzhafter?
Bob Wurzhafter approve.
Warren Shane?
Warren Shane approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approve.
And is Tom Gagin connected yet?
Don't see him.
Don't see him. This is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we continue this matter to our July 11th meeting. Next item on the agenda is again site plan approval for an amended site plan. This is for 1291 Main Street with Down Cape Engineering. This is for a proposed expansion of the existing restaurant to include the former fish market space, resulting in 41 new indoor seats. And the applicant also proposes to make existing outdoor seating permanent. These outdoor seats were approved during the COVID emergency approvals that we gave to allow some restaurants to have additional outdoor seating. But they want to make those permanent now, and this will result in 143 total seats. So I am going to ask, is, do I have someone presenting for this matter, the applicant or your agent?
Yes, Derek Burgess from Mac Seafood.
Great. Go ahead, Mr. Burgess.
Okay, so we would like to request site plan review to expand our restaurant into the old fish market space. We moved the fish market across the courtyard to the old fancy space. And we'd like to make use of that now vacant space to the right of the existing restaurant by adding a bar and some counter seating and some tables. It will result in 41 additional seats. If anyone has ever been to Macs in the summertime, you know that it can be a very long wait and seating is hard to get. So we're trying to serve as much of the public as we possibly can. And, you know, we'd like to make our businesses viable as possible in the neighborhood of Chatham, and this will greatly help us to do that. Along with this process, I'm kind of new to this game. Only been working for Mac for about a year now, and I'm new to Chatham altogether. I'm a Provincetown guy. So I did not know anything about the outdoor seating approval only being temporary. So that was pointed out to me. So we revised our site plan review request to include the outdoor seating. So the end result of that is that it puts us over the top in the amount of parking spots required. And we really don't have any options for increasing the parking. We'd like to mitigate our overage by adding some bike racks and potentially adding some electric car chargers. If that's something that the board would see in a positive light as to a path to hopefully granting us approval, relief from the requirement of all those spaces to accommodate the amount of seats. We have, I believe, 54 outside and 41 inside. We have there, so that would require us to have 110 parking spots by the code. And right now, we have 103. So we're seven short.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I think you also, this is Catherine, if I could also meant, you also mentioned in your letter that, and I believe this is to a large extent true, that the other businesses in that complex are mostly daytime hours. Whereas Mac Seafood, you have, is most of your business at dinner? Or do you also have a lot of lunch business?
We do a fair, a fair amount of business at lunch during the peak season from the Fourth of July through Labor Day. Other than that, it's mostly a dinner crowd. And I think that, you know, the businesses, the other businesses aren't as frequented in the summertime by the tourists. So I think that it's gonna not put a negative burden upon them to add these seats. I think that there's still going to be plenty of parking for everyone, and the bike racks will help mitigate that. You know, obviously, in our, the state of our environment being what it is, we need to encourage as many people as we can not to drive. And if they are going to drive, I think the electric car chargers are going to be something that may encourage people to buy things that may actually save the earth going forward. But I do believe that, you know, we really get people on bikes and in electric cars and out of gasoline vehicles.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll just mention to the planning board, we have a very clear and complete staff report. And what I'm seeing, the parking, the request for a waiver of the additional parking spaces, they have 103 spaces and 111 are required. So that's one of the main things that the planning board needs to consider is the waiver of those parking spaces, which we have the authority to do. Also, we have not received comments from the Department of Natural Resources. We have to note that the additional sewer flow will require the approval of the sewer commission. And let me just see, yes. And we do have a staff recommendation that we do not need to ask for a performance bond. And I would agree with that recommendation. But we do need to consider the parking, and I'm just taking a look. Fire department, I'll read you the referral responses. The zoning board of appeals does not need to review this. The fire department, the fire chief has no concerns with this proposal. As I mentioned, we have not yet received a response from Dr. Dunkinson from the health department. Again, as I mentioned, the additional sewer flow will require the approval of the sewer commission. Conservation Commission notes that this is not within the jurisdiction of the conservation commission. And also, the applicant is scheduled to be heard by the Historic Business District Commission on May 18th. So any of those matters will be addressed in that meeting. So with that being said, let's go through the board and see if you have questions or comments for Mr. Burgess. Art Spru, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, this is Art Spru. I can't remember, Catherine, but I think when we first, when we first got into the pandemic, we had one or two approvals that came before the board for temporary outdoors seating. And then we went to an administrative approach. I can't remember if Max was one that came before us and we actually did vote on, or was this one that was just approved by administrative approval? Maybe Katie knows the answer to that.
Yeah, maybe Katie knows. I, to be honest with you, Arthur, I don't remember, but Katie has her hand up. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, so Max did come before the planning board. They were one of the first to request the outdoor seating. And so they were, their request came in before the administrative review process came to be. So this, they did go before the planning board to request those.
Okay, all right. So there's a couple of things. I'm looking at this now as a permanent addition. And I think all the usual elements that we look at from a safety perspective, as well as lighting and that. So I've noted a couple of things because this is now going to be a permanent outdoor area that could be used, you know, maybe not all year round, but could be three seasons anyway. Along the patio area to the north where the parked cars are, and then also on the west side, where there's two cars parked next to the patio area. And I think there's, it's important that those cars have some means of curb stops to make sure that they don't go too far. I know there's a railing on the north side of the patio, but there's nothing on the west side. And I think a railing needs to be put in similar to what's on the north side to help define the separation of where the car parks and where the patio areas. There's proposed to have 10 tables now of 54 seats. When I went out there and took a look at it, there's like 18 tables out there. So I'm not quite sure which tables are going to go and which are going to stay, but I'm assuming that there will be only 10 when the, when this approval does move forward. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, the only thing that's going to stay, the only thing that will stay are the picnic tables, and that'll add up to the 10 tables of 54 seats.
Okay. And then I noticed that there's, you know, like a paved courtyard, and there were like three tables that were set up there. I'm assuming that those are not going to stay. Those would also go?
Correct.
Okay.
The only tables will be in the patio area. And we actually, we have a application into HBDC to convert the shell area to pavers and add lighting and landscaping. So we can certainly add the parking restriction on the, the side of the building that you're asking for as part of that work. That's, that's not a problem. So I think with the, the addition of the pavers and the lighting and that parking restriction that you're requesting, I think it'll be a very safe area.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. The patio area, the pavers and that, I think that this is a good, good thing to do if you're going to put outdoor seating in. It's about 1,865 square feet. I don't, I don't think we have to go crazy about addressing, you know, stormwater runoff here, but it would, generally, the contours flow north toward the parking lot from the, from the patio area. And I suggest that you put in a French drain on, on that northern edge there to pick up any kind of stormwater flow that might be running in that direction.
We will certainly do that. And we're going, those pave, those pavers are going to be the drainable side, the drainable kind of pavers. And there'll be sufficient substrate underneath them to facilitate that drainage. And there'll be sufficient substrate underneath them to facilitate that drainage. So I don't think we're gonna have a, any plodding or puddling is an issue with the, the plan that we have for putting that patio area together.
Yeah, and I noticed the one, I, I went out there, there's a, on the westernmost patio section, there's a raised sanitary manhole casting there. I'm assuming that you're gonna have to readjust that. I don't know what grades that you're proposing, but there, that look like that needs to be, you know, leveled with the, with whatever the tables are.
Yeah, it certainly will be. I, I think the, the grade's gonna remain the same, and we'll just lower that, that manhole cover. I'm not quite sure how it ended up where it is, but we're not leaving it like that.
Yeah. Now, this, this sort of a challenging question, because usually this is a building code-related issue, but we have an additional fifty-four patrons now. And, and when I took a look at the plan, the interior plan and the arrangement for the seating, now, you know, I couldn't tell if the, if the bar area is a separate area or if it's interconnected in with the restaurant area, and you can walk through from one side or the other. And I'm just trying to understand circulation and the flow.
Yeah, so that, that's open from the, with the counter on the left in the existing restaurant where you order their food, there's a cased opening into the new bar area. That's a, yeah, that's wide open right there. So there'll be free flow in between the two spaces.
Okay, that's the same as it was previously when the fish market was there, right?
Hmm, correct.
Yeah, okay, all right. So my question though is, I only see one bathroom. There are only one bathroom servicing.
There's two more at the rear. There's, yeah, there's two more at the rear of the restaurant that aren't shown in this drawing. I was, I was told when we put this application together, we, that we just needed to show the seating and not the bathroom, so I apologize for that.
Well, no, I'm, again, this is a little bit different from us because usually the, he's tabled and all that on the interior. But as soon as you put them on the exterior, now you're putting a burden. And I, I just wanted them to know whether, if there was gonna be a single bathroom for a hundred and forty-three patrons. And thank you for clarifying that. I think it would be a real challenge if you only had one.
No doubt.
So there's a cup on that sketch that you're showing there right now. When you enter where the fish market was, on the exterior of that, there's some dashed lines in there. And I'm not quite sure what those things are. Could you describe that to me?
So basically, what you're seeing there is, that's a remnant of the, the landscaping plan, I believe. But what we're going to have, and we've already been approved by HBDC for this, is the in-between, to the left and right of the double door, where you see that outswing double door, those are gonna be fold-up windows, and I believe that's what that dashed line may be denoting. And the solid line behind the dash is a countertop. So the countertop's actually gonna stick out past the plane, the building, at those window locations. So when those windows fold up, the people sitting inside will be communicating with the outside space. And we're hoping that to retrain the line of people waiting to get in to go along that walkway, parallel to the front of the fish market. So there'll be some interaction between the people in line and the people sitting at the countertop, or we're looking to create a real community space.
Okay, but those aren't intended to be, you know, permanent places with seats where, where some.
No, 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 not on the outside, just on the inside.
Okay.
And that's the one, the one to the father's right will be a service window for the waitstaff to pick up drinks from the bar to take to the outside tables.
Okay, thank you. So on, on the site plan, I noticed that, that, you know, the one, the two locations that you have for the bike rack, I think the one that you have out in the front, which is on the northeast side, that, that makes sense for it to go there. The other, the other location they have though, it looks like it's in the rear. And there's a lot of plantings and vegetation in there. My suggestion is, is that you would move it to the west side. And just north, there's a, a clear area there where it says, right where it says paid parking, just next to that. That's all a grassed area there. And it would certainly be appropriate to put a bike rack there. And then you wouldn't have to remove all the vegetation and stuff, and then we'd be closer for them to enter the restaurant or a bar.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that. The only downside is the dumpsters right there, so it's not the most attractive area.
Yeah, and it, again, this is up to you. It's just that, I'm just thinking that you're gonna start ripping out a lot of vegetation in the back there. And I'm not sure it's gonna be really conducive for bikers to walk all the way around then.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't like to remove green stuff. We like green stuff.
Yeah, right. So, and, and I think the, my last points have to deal with like the lighting. I, there's eleven light fixtures around your site. They're not all noted on the site plan. They're, but they're not really structured and set up so that, and I think we have to pay attention to this now with, with ten tables outside. You could be transitioning to some darker times in late evenings, depending on the time of year. I think there needs to be some lighting in those three areas that you are proposing for the ten tables. You know, I would say almost like a couple of light fixtures in each of the areas where they would be casting their light down. And I think, I think the last thing that I have is I, I think it needs to be clear, because once in a while, somebody starts entering your site from the exit. And I think it would be helpful if you repainted your striping there at the exit and made it very clear that that's an exit. I, you have signs there on both of them. But maybe it'll help a little bit if you paint the, the striping and the arrows again, because those are faded away. The entrance seems to be fine the way you've structured it. So that, that's what I have right now, Catherine. Oh, as far as the parking is concerned, I, I'm, I'm okay with waiving the parking requirement for those seven spaces. This is what we're promoting in the West Chatham neighborhood, new zoning, that we should take advantage and have the applicant take advantage of multiple businesses that have different uses. And I'm, so I'm supportive of granting the way we're associated with that. They're not far off anyway.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Arthur. All right, let's see, Bob Wurzhefter, do you have questions or comments?
Yeah, just a few. Can we start with, I keep hearing ten outside tables, but the drawing shows eleven? The math shows eleven? So can we clarify? Thirty plus twenty-four.
All right.
Yes.
There's some, it's a mix of four tops and six tops and a couple of deuces. So yeah, there's, there's fifty-four seats total, but you're right, there are eleven tables out there. And then it will, eleven picnic tables that will be staying for a total of fifty-four seats.
Okay, just wanna get that cleared. So if, I'm really only, my questions are mostly about parking. So if we can go back to the, to the parking map, it would be easier to. I think the first question I have is accommodating pickup. Are you going to designate any of the sites in the front for fifteen-minute parking for, for takeout?
So we usually, yeah, we usually cone off a few of those spots nearest to the, the brick walkway. It's both the courtyard and the main entrance to the restaurant for pickup. And then we put flags in the, in the cones. And I, I think that because we're gonna have, we're gonna try to retrain the line of people waiting to go parallel to the building, I think it might be a good idea to have those two spots on the side of the building be designated as pickup during peak times.
Okay. Yeah, and then the, I, I mean, I'm all for electric vehicles. As the Energy and Climate Action Committee Chair, I've been pushing the town to install more electric vehicle charging stations. I'm curious as to the type that you're thinking of plugging in, of having, as it will affect who, who actually uses them.
Right.
If, if they're not fast charging, then the people that will be using them will be, will not be people coming to your restaurant, but people who are just coming to use those parking spaces for charging. So I guess I'm, that would actually take away a couple more spots for actual use in the restaurant, unless you make them fast charging, in which case you might actually get people to come to your restaurant just to, you know, get a charge and, and, and drive away. So I think I would encourage you to try to go fast charging. They're clearly much more expensive to install, but you can also look to get some support from the state.
Right.
And especially if you're making them public.
Yeah, we're most certainly going fast charger, because I, I have an electric car that's being delivered, and that'll be the car that I'll be driving back and forth from Province Town to Chatham. And it will need to be charged when it gets there. So there, if I have to pay for it out of my own pocket, they will be fast charges, and I can promise you that.
Okay.
Great.
Great, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bob Dubus, questions or comments?
Bob Dubus, sorry, there. I'm, I'm right there. I have a question. How many seats before all of this new, new plan came about that was the original seats? How much seating?
So there were, there were forty-eight in the, in the main restaurant and the fifty-four outside that were COVID-approved.
All right, fifty-four outside.
Yep. There's no change, there's no change in the outside count.
Okay. I know nobody really realizes, but way back when, when this building was put up, it was a front yard, it was very fancy and, and had a lot of gardens in it and stuff. They had, they did have a bakery and a store, and it did have tables outs, out in the little patio, a couple of them. And then they started, the fish market started having a, a little, a little takeout at first. And then slowly it grew a little more and more and more. I, I'm, I'm, I think there's too much out front. I'm worried about the layout of the building inside, but that's not my purview, okay? That's my opinion only. My opinion only, not the board's. I see when in the summertime, which is a popular place, I'll give you that, it's very, very popular. Everybody loves going there that I've talked to. But when this parking lot gets filled up, because there's not enough restaurants in this town to cover everything, you have filled all the parking spaces, and then now you have takeout. Okay, if you didn't have takeout, but people love to have fish and chips takeout. And I bet you, you could give us the numbers to, to follow through with that. So my, my opinion is there's too many seats. It went from a luncheonette to, because of the COVID, they allowed you to put fifty-four seats outside. Now we're going to a full-blown restaurant. And it wouldn't be bad, but I think you do way too much in takeout, and you're gonna have problems with that. I see, I don't see a good traffic pattern to take care of the people that are, that are waiting in line and want takeout with just two, two, two parking places. So I'm sorry, I am gonna be negative on this situation. And it's only my opinion, just so you realize that, has nothing to do with the board, or you, for a matter of fact. I just know from experience that I think that's a little too much. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. So Bob, this is Catherine. So for the, how would you amend it so that you would feel comfortable with the, with the traffic flow, both pedestrian and vehicular? Would you reduce the number of outdoor seats?
I, I, I can't really tell you that, but, but I think that, that maybe reducing three of the tables outside would give you a little more room to have people go in and out of the buildings. But, but that's not my purview either. And I, I just think that, I'm looking at the bar. Now, can I ask, is there gonna be, it's, it's not, no, I can't, I can't do anything with the inside of the building. That's only speculative, so I, I won't touch that.
We do shut off takeout, we do shut off takeout when it gets too busy, because the kitchen's not big enough, so.
No, negative. I would not, I would not shut off takeout. People.
We, we have, we don't, we don't have the, we don't have the capacity in the kitchen to serve takeout during, from the hours of seven to nine, nine-thirty on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
But you see, that is, that is prominent business that, that people.
I get it. I wish we, I wish we had the kitchen capacity to do it, but we have to be able to serve the seats at the restaurant.
Well, you're, so you're putting yourself in, in a, in a bind by putting so many seats in this restaurant that you're just gonna shut takeoff out, and people are gonna get very frustrated.
We were, we were, we were shutting off the takeout last year without, without these tables. And the, the lines were just incredibly long, and people wanna sit, they wanna eat. It's more, it's way more of the volume of our business than the takeout.
This is, this is why I think there's too much for that area. I'm sorry.
I understand your point.
Okay. Okay, Warren Shane, comments or questions?
Just a couple of comments. And again, I'm looking at parking too. I also have some sympathy with Bob Dubus's comments about, about there being so much activity there that there's just not enough room. And I think that could spill over into, into the parking. First question I really had though is if we're talking about making this a permanent part of the restaurant out front, is just who owns that piece of ground out there?
So it's a. I'm sorry. It's owned by the condo, I'm sorry. It's owned by the condo association. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's owned by the Cornfield Condo Association, but we own the controlling share in the Cornfield condo. So it's, it's, it's under our control.
Okay, and so, you know, you have asked for, or would, if you needed to, you get permission to do what you're doing.
Correct.
Permanent. Now, does that set any precedent for if any of the other businesses there perhaps change hands? Or even if they don't, they wanna go put some tables outside? Does that mean that they have some inherent or implied right to do the same thing?
I don't, I don't believe so, because again, we own, we are in control of the majority of shares in the condo association. So unless, you know, if an accommodation could be made and it was okay with the town, you know, we wouldn't want to neglect anybody else's ability to, to further their business. But at this point, with the tenants they have, there's no other food service and, you know, but no one else. Everyone is either retail or service industry or construction company, so they're not looking to have outdoor seating. If another tenant was to come in, we still, you know, we would still have the majority, the voting majority on the board, on the condo board.
Well, yeah, my, my point really was that in the case there's a change of tenants, right now, everything is fine. But if you have a change, who knows what those businesses could be.
Right.
And to the extent that there's a precedent being set here about being able to expand outside that just makes what is a tight fit already even more problematic. There, there does seem to be some minor discrepancies in the numbers with respect to the existing places now and, and that you are proposing and that you're requiring. What's on the, the plan that we have says a hundred and eleven are required. says a hundred and eleven are required. Um, I think the staff write up may reference that. Um, but I do think that at some point we ought to have the number for how many spaces are there and how many are required.
Right. So since we got, go ahead.
Well, rather, and you know, so that's that's just an administrative thing, whatever it is. I do believe that um, the spaces that you are adding to the restaurant require, give or take, ten or eleven more spaces than you than are there now, something like that.
Yes.
Therefore, I believe that the number of spaces that are there now are probably in accordance with the calculations. But um, I do have a question, however, and that is with respect to um, the calculations that are on the plan. Have those been reviewed, Catherine, uh, by um, by staff?
Uh, yes, I understand they have and I understand that uh, the number of spaces that exist is a hundred and three and Katie, please correct me if I'm wrong. And the number required is a hundred and eleven. So that means if we grant the waiver, we're waiving eight spaces. And.
A hundred and three, not a hundred and one. Okay.
Correct, yes.
Um, the 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 town actually came, we we thought that our engineer came up with a hundred and one. And then um, the town got back to me and said they're counting a hundred and three. So my engineer went back, recounted, he's got a hundred and three. So there, we need a hundred and eleven required and there's a hundred and three existing, so we're short eight. Um, so that's what we're looking for waiver for.
I've got no problem with with the with the parking. I'm just saying it, you know, we ought to, whatever is in the folder here ought to be consistent. It ought to be what it is. I did have the question as well, though, that in the calculations that are actually summarized on the plan, it does show that uh, for the restaurant facilities that you've got, you're showing the calculation for parking spaces needed for employees. But none of the other units there and none of the other tenants uh, are showing any parking for the employees. Is is that an oversight? Is it not required? Um, again, not being an expert on the parking regulations that we have.
Oh, and I see Katie has her hand raised. So maybe Katie, would you comment on this question, please?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So not not all uses require employee spaces. Restaurant uses do require employee spaces. Some are just purely calculated based on the square footage of the use. Um, so typical for retailer office space. Um, but but restaurants require uh, employee parking as well.
That, thank you for that, Katie. Um, but again, there are other businesses there and they do have employees. And so they will be um, taking up spaces that would otherwise um, be taken up by by the restaurant probably. And again, with um, Bob Dubus's comments, it's already kind of a tight fit. Uh, and with that as a comment, I don't know what to say about it except to say um, in accordance with what Bob said, it's um, um, there's not enough parking there, really. Um, and that's, you know, probably six months of the year, there's plenty of parking. And I do believe the timing of uh, of activity at the rest of the end of businesses that are there makes it such that most of the time uh, during the day, hour wise, uh, the parking is probably just fine. But if you're talking about a couple hours at lunch and then all through the dinner hours, um, um, to the extent that anything's going on in those other businesses and to the extent that the takeout is active. Um, uh, I've got real doubts as to whether there is enough parking. And I'm I'm not sure what the safety valve is. If I've gone over there, there really doesn't, there isn't any parking option other than onsite. Um, so at any rate, that's my comment. I don't know to what extent I would um, uh, propose a reduction in the outside seating area because that's the, one of the best things about the whole setup there. I think it's to be encouraged, not discouraged. But um, uh, I, I'm anxious about there being enough space to park. Um, and that's um, I guess to be seen, to the extent that they meet the test of um, what is needed by the regulations. Um, I guess the question would be whether um, whether we would need to somehow or other create more parking spaces so that they comply to the letter of the law, get the extra spaces or reduce uh, such that it would um, meet the regulation. Um, those are my comments. I'm not sure where I would vote right at the moment on the issue, but um, those are my comments. So nothing else. Thanks.
Thank you, Warren. This is Catherine. Um, I'll just make a suggestion to the board because there are two board members now who have brought up concern about the amount of restaurant traffic vis a vis the space available and vis a vis the parking space available. So uh, when we take the vote to approve the plan as submitted, you could vote in the negative that you don't approve it. And alternatively, the board could uh, either, you know, request that the applicant amend the number of interior seats that you're planning to add or eliminate some of the exterior uh, tables that were approved for COVID. But now the request is approving them permanently. So the board could make those changes. Uh, if we feel that it's necessary. So since I've heard this from two board members, I just wanted to make those suggestions. Um, so that being said, let's see, I think we'd still need to hear from Roger Griffin. If you have questions or comments for Mr. Burgess.
Uh, no, I guess my comments, I know we're living up to the spaces we have, but I mean, you know, in a lot of ways, I think of with Derek, I mean, what a great problem to, you know, have because we 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 uh, we're there a lot, especially during the summer months. And um, I guess I would probably say I think I would take a shot with the extra. So it is eight spaces, but um, it's a great model. It's a great, it's just, it's fantastic for everybody. It's it's a wonderful operation. I guess what what I what I what I have noticed, and someone had mentioned it earlier, uh, the entrance and the exit. And we have actually more than a few times had a problem going out. Uh, the, it seems to be more the exit, when we're trying to get out and people are coming in and it's in the evening. And the exit isn't really wide enough because it's assuming you gotta go right or left. And we even were waiting to get in, when it is dusk or dark, notice that for some reason, there there are more issues with the people trying to enter the exit far more greater than have people at the exit. Uh, people exiting the entrance. And I I I don't know if it's lighting or maybe it's the time of night or maybe it's a combination of the suggestion. I don't know whether we'd have to do something somehow without having a look too invasive to probably have something this do not enter or do not exit. But if we, that I was thinking at the beginning, if it got busy within, and it's going to because it's a, it's a great spot. Uh, you're probably gonna be to capacity in the parking lot. Um, and I do wonder, I would have to be looking at some, maybe some sort of signage, some sort of more painting on the, there's some down cast signs. But but it needs, it needs some sort of uh, traffic control out there in signage per se and lighting. When it's during the summer months when it's busy, especially, and this was even last year. I mean, it's because it's busy. It's a great spot, busy. That's my comment. I think there'd have to be, you know, someone to be able to react to that somehow. And I don't know who we would talk to about, you don't wanna paint everything on the parking lot. You have to have some sort of signage. Because it does get, especially like you said on that, on that exit sign, it's more than, it's several times a night. Anyway, those are just my comments. But I guess I would tend to sit there and say we should, I would, uh, guess I really don't have a problem with the eight spaces.
Okay, great. Thank you, Roger. And I'm just gonna ask, um, and I see Katie has her hand raised. So Katie, did you wanna make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to um, address Warren's concern regarding the calculations for the other uses and the and employees. So those uses, uh, the calculations actually take into account the employees that would be in those um, in those businesses. So there's not an additional calculation for that because it's taken into account as the calculations were were created. So I just wanted to make sure that I relayed that information.
Great, thank you, Katie. Um, and let's see, Arthur, you have your hand raised. Did you wanna make a comment?
Uh, yes, uh, some interesting points that some of the other board members brought up. And I thought I'd uh, put in some, some of my thoughts associated with that on the parking. Um, I I think there needs to be some designated takeout parking spaces. I don't know how many, but I think there should be some. Now, if there's, if there is not going to be um, uh, uh, takeout, say after seven o'clock, then you know, it's just, there just needs to be a sign there, you know, reserved for takeout. You know, uh, until seven o'clock or something like that, that would resolve it. The other reason why I thought that the number of parking spaces was not gonna be as much of a concern. And and I I think if um, a clarification on this, the the fish market and Mr. Burgess, if you can clarify this. The fish market, if I recall, closes at five o'clock. Is is that right?
It closes at six P M.
Six P M. Well, there's twenty spaces that are allocated for that. And that's when the the peak of the restaurant business starts to ratchet up. So I, that that was one of the the things that I was looking at from a shared and timeline that helps alleviate that a little bit and provide some flexibility associated with this. So um, I'm I'm still comfortable with it, but I I do agree with the designated some parking spaces for takeout because that that I would hate to wanna go all the way in the back, park, walk all the way to front, just grab my takeout and then go all the way in the back again. I think some designated spaces makes a lot of sense there. Um, the other thing, uh, I was thinking about, and and Roger had brought it up a little bit with the uh, entrances from the standpoint of better lighting. There's, there's a light fixtures that are around the site. They're not the best of light fixtures. I think the two that are out in front there by the entrance, there's one each by the, I believe, the entrance and and the exit. Those need to be replaced with a a better downcast lighting that illuminates that whole intersection there. And also would illuminate this, the signs that are out in front that say enter, entrance and exit. Because I I was specifically looking at them and I said, yep, they're there, they're clear. And when I was exiting, I saw do not enter, do not exit through the entrance sign. So that they were all there. I I think there needs to be some improved lighting. I think Roger was right that when it gets dark at night, people stop looking. So better illumination, I think is going to help that piece.
We need.
Yeah, and then the the last thing, uh, with an outdoor seating area, I'm I'm just thinking here, uh, should there be some trash containers and waitstaff stations that are going to be designated outside or is just everything gonna be through the door? And are you gonna locate where some of those are gonna be?
So we already, we have one outdoor bus station and that is on the right side of the restaurant in the, yeah, right there where your hand is right now.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, right there. And then there'll be one on the other side where those two spots are right up on the other side of that split rail fence where the patio ends, there's gonna be another bus station there. Yeah, it's a real problem to try to get stuff in and out.
Yeah, okay. I I think that's a good idea. I just wanted to clarify that. You probably should note note that. Uh, and then the last thing that um, uh, that Bob Butch after brought up was the number of tables. I I think we should be clear on that. I, the way I count it, there's five, six seat tables and six four seat tables. So that should be noted that way. And um, that that, that's what it is so that maybe at a later date, somebody doesn't swap something out and then create some additional spaces there that we weren't really looking for. Um, that that's all I have, Catherine. Thank you.
All right, great. Great. All right. So uh, I think we'll, we'll move to a vote, but I do wanna ask the board. Um, maybe I should take, see if there's any public comment before we move to a vote. Is there anyone from the public who's connected, who would like to ask any questions or make any comments about this proposed site plan amendment? I don't see anyone. I don't see any hands raised. Yes, I see, I see one person. Yes.
Question.
Yes.
Is there, have they given any thought to a drive through for pickup?
Hmm, that that would be great. I just don't know how that could be accommodated because there's no real access to it. The only way we could do it would be there's a, an alleyway on the um, the right side of the building, kind of beyond where you see that bathroom drawn uh, that leads down to the kitchen. Um, but we would have to figure out how to manage the traffic flow. We've thought about it. Uh, to be honest with you, until we figure out a way to to have our kitchen produce more food, we're um, you know, we love the takeout business, but it's it's not something we can do twenty four seven, three sixty five right now because of the constraints of the size of our kitchen and the amount of people that we can have working in there. And the, how much food we can store and produce in a timely manner while keeping the quality where it is. So um, it's a real issue for us. It's something we're focusing on, a lot of our energy on how to improve and get better. And as part of that plan, we would certainly wanna come up with a way to get it to um, people quicker. Whether we're also looking into some technology, um, possible solutions for that where people would get a text message that their order was ready and they would pull into the parking lot and someone would run the order out to their car. And they wouldn't even need to have a spot to park in. They would just have their order would be delivered to their car. Um, and when they pull up to the front entrance of the uh, the main entrance to the restaurant and it would be, their order would be delivered right to their car. So that's something we're looking at. Um, there's certain, technology certainly exists that would allow us to do that. And I think that would alleviate um, at least some of your concerns about the takeout.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um, this is Catherine. Now, the board has, there's a couple of things uh, that have come up from the board. So I wanna define a course of action. We've, some of you have requested a number of things to be added to the plan. I'm just thinking um, to add them as conditions. It's a little bit lengthy, but we could add them as conditions and vote tonight to approve uh, the amended site plan with conditions. We'd have to add conditions about um, restriping the exit and adding lighting to the exit so that it's clear. Um, we'd want to approve the parking waiver of eight spaces. We'd also want to talk about moving the bike racks. Some of these are details. Um, and eliminating the manhole cover, um, putting in the French drain in the north. Uh, putting, making sure there's a rail for the parking spaces on the west that are next to the pavers. Uh, so uh, short of, and also clearly indicating the number of exterior outside tables and number of outside seats. So those are some of the details of changes that the board has requested in the plans. So we could add those as a condition, just list them. Uh, or we could continue the matter. You could bring us plans that include all of those changes uh, to our next board meeting. Um, can I just get a sense of the board, how you feel comfortable in proceeding?
I'm okay with conditions.
Okay. And.
Catherine, this is Martin. I certainly am in favor of approving with conditions and not continuing.
Okay, great. And.
Same for me, Catherine. This is Art's group.
Okay, great. And Roger, I think.
This is Roger. Same same for me. I don't really wanna see anyone holding up and, you know, no, I'd like to, let's do it. Proceed forward with conditions.
Okay, great. And then also, I'll just mention a couple of board members have expressed their concerns about uh, the amount of seats, that it's too much traffic. And you, I think in this case, what we should do is add these conditions. Uh, and and look at the amended site plan as it's presented to us. And if you disagree, uh, you you should vote according to what you feel is best. You can vote in the negative if you feel that. feel is best. You can vote in the negative if you feel that, um, adding this many seats is not a workable solution. So is that clear to all the board members? How we're going to proceed? Okay, so, um, do I need to summarize those, the conditions that we're adding again? Uh, or Katie and Christina, do you think we've summarized it clearly enough? There's one person with a hand raised. I can't see who it is.
Art Spru.
Art, okay.
Just one, one additional one. I asked for cutoff lighting in each of the patio areas.
Yeah, that's right. Additional lighting in the patio areas. Okay, great. So we're adding a little, a, a summary of conditions that were brought up by the board to be added to the plan as so stated, uh, along with the conditions that are in the staff report. And Katie, do we need to vote on the parking waiver as a separate vote? Or can we include that in our vote?
I, I think I, I prefer it as two separate votes. I think the parking waiver first and then we'll move forward with the, with the approval with conditions. I just want to make sure though, um, I didn't hear you say this, Catherine, when you were summarizing, but we do want, um, takeout spaces designated on the plan, correct?
Yes, correct. Yes, correct. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you. And that is normally how we've done it. We've done the parking waiver as a separate vote. So let's first vote on the waiver of the eight parking spaces. Uh, and I'll ask for a motion that the board approves the waiver of the eight parking spaces.
Art, Art Spru, I'll make that motion.
And may I have a second to that motion?
Roger Griffin, I'll second that.
Great, thank you. So let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, sustain.
Yes, oh, yes, thank you. And Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
And I don't think Tom Gagin has joined us yet. So Roger Griffin?
Pro.
Uh, and this is Catherine Helper, and I also approve the waiver of the eight parking spaces. So let's go now to our vote to approve the amended site plan as presented to us with the conditions as summarized and also as stated in your staff report, which are our standard conditions. And of course, you are free to vote in the positive or the negative. So, but the, but the motion should be in the positive to approve the amended site plan with conditions. I have a motion to that effect.
This is Warren.
Let's say that Warren has made the motion. Do I have a second? Roger, do you want a second?
Roger, I'll second that.
Thank you, Roger. Let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru?
The, I, I approve, but I just want to clarify, it's with the additional conditions that we, we designated, correct?
Yes, correct, correct. That I summarized verbally. Yeah, okay, great. And Bob Wirtschaft?
Bob Wirtschaft, approve.
Uh, and Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, sustain.
Thank you. Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain. Um, notwithstanding my concerns about the, the traffic and the parking, uh, there's more parking in this location than virtually any other place in town. And, um, and I think the business model here is terrific and I think the business is terrific. And far be it from me to, uh, say no to something which is very highly desired and, um, a, a big plus to the town. If there's too, too little parking there, there's still more parking in that area than anywhere else in town. Um, and I think that, uh, the variance that we're, uh, giving with respect to a nominal number of parking spaces, considering the total is, is very warranted. So I'm in favor.
All right, great. Thank you, Warren. And Roger Griffin, how do you vote?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Okay, approve with conditions. And I don't think Tom Gagin has joined us yet. This is Catherine Helper, and I also vote to approve with conditions as stated, as summarized and also as stated in the staff report. So thank you very much, Mr. Burgess.
Great. Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it. I'll get those revised plans up to you just as soon as I can.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Burgess. So now we'll move on to the next items on our agenda. And give me a moment here. I've got everything open up. We're moving to chairman's comments. And we've got two items listed. And one is a letter from the Massachusetts Historical Commission dated May 6th regarding the South Chatham Village Historic Business District. And I'm going to turn off my video for a minute so I can put my phone down. And I would just like to read this letter to the planning board and also to the public. So, uh, this is regarding the National Register nomination for the South Chatham Village Historic District. Uh, we are pleased to inform you that the South Chatham Village Historic District in Chatham will be considered by the Massachusetts Historical Commission for nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. The National Register of Historic Places is the federal government's official list of historic properties worthy of preservation. Listing in the National Register provides recognition and assists in preserving our nation's heritage. Listing of this property provides recognition of the community's important historic resources and assures protective review of federal projects that might adversely affect the character of the property. Listing in the National Register does not mean that limitations will be placed on the property by the federal government. Public visitation rights are not required of property owners. The federal government will not attach restrictive covenants to the property or seek to acquire it. If a property is listed in the National Register, the owner may do anything with it that he or she wishes unless state or federal funds, permits, or licensing are used or unless some other regional and or local ordinance or policy is in effect. In Massachusetts, properties nominated to the National Register are automatically listed in the State Register of Historic Places. There are no limitations, public visitation requirements, or restricted, restrictive covenants for private properties included in the State Register. State Register properties owned by municipalities and nonprofit organizations may compete for state restoration grants. A public informational meeting at which the proposed nomination will be discussed will be held on May 25th, 2022 at 10:30 a.m. in the large meeting room of the Town of Chatham's Annex Building at, at 261 George Ryder Road in Chatham. So that's this Wednesday. The meeting will be in a hybrid format, allowing people the option of joining remotely. For information on how to join remotely, please visit the Town of Chatham website and navigate to the online meeting calendar. Anyone with questions on how to attend can contact the Town of Chatham. You are invited to attend the meeting of the Massachusetts Historical Commission at which this nomination will be considered. The commission will meet at 1:00 P. M. on June 8th, 2022. Details on how to attend will be posted on the Massachusetts Historical Commission's website closer to the meeting date. A draft copy of the nomination and the criteria under which properties are evaluated will be available from the State Historic Preservation Officer upon request and at the Eldridge Public Library. Attached fee, uh, and the planning board received this in your packets. Please find notices that explain in greater detail the results of listing in the National Register and that describe the rights and procedures by which an owner may comment on or object to listing in the National Register. Should you have any questions about the nomination prior to the Massachusetts Historical Commission meeting, please contact Ben Haley, National Register Director, uh, at this office. And this is from Brona Simon of the State Historic Preservation Officer of the Massachusetts Historical Commission. So I believe that there's no action that we wish to take or that we need to take. But we did just want to read this to the board and to the public for your information. But I will ask if there are any comments that any board member would like to make regarding this nomination to the, of the South Chatham Village Historic District. Any comments from the public regarding the nomination? Great. So I think it's, it's good news and we'll see how, how the procedures go and everyone is invited to the informational meetings. So let's move on then to the next item on our agenda under chairman's comments. And this is a letter that we have received from the Select Board, uh, from their Executive Secretary Shannon Neely. It is dated April 22nd. I did read it previously, but we do want to have at least a brief discussion tonight. And this is regarding the Protective Zoning Bylaw, uh, on the Runway Protection Zone Overlay District remand to the planning board. At its meeting on March 15th, 2022, the Select Board received a presentation on the draft warrant article proposing a runway protection zone, RPZ overlay district. The planning board's vote of 132 from its March 14th, 2022 public hearing on the article to recommend the article to 2022 annual town meeting was relayed to the Select Board at that time. The Select Board, in acknowledgement of the importance of having an RPZ overlay district in place to comply with legal and contractual requirements, voted unanimously to send the proposed bylaw back to the planning board for further consideration. The Select Board asks that the planning board take up the matter again and work diligently in conjunction with the Airport Commission to craft a protective zoning bylaw that realizes broad support and which may be favorably recommended to town meeting voters in the future. Should you have any questions regarding the foregoing, please do not hesitate to contact me. And that's from Shannon Neely, the Executive Secretary, uh, to the Select Board. So I think what I'd like to ask board members at this meeting, I, I think the request is obvious. We do need to, uh, take this proposed bylaw amendment for the Runway Protection Zone and continue with the process. And what I'd like to ask the board, first of all, uh, there's a possibility of an annual town meeting, a special town meeting in the fall. And then, of course, there's annual town meeting 2023. So the first question might be a question of timing because we do probably will want to have some community engagement with the bylaw to make it as the Select Board has requested a bylaw, which can have broad support from the community uh, and which we can bring to annual town meeting. So the first question for the board is a question of timing. Do you see this process as something that we could possibly accomplish by the fall? If there is a special town meeting in the fall of 2022? Or is it something that you think is better put into process with the goal of bringing it to annual town meeting 2023? So that's the first question I would want to ask the board. And why don't we just, uh, see what your responses are? Art Spru?
Okay, so the bylaw never came to us before the public hearing itself, so we never had an opportunity to flush out some of the issues. Uh, quite frankly, the summer seems to be a challenging time to be, uh, meeting on a more frequent basis just to, uh, deal with something that has been lingering for 70 years. My opinion is, is let's not rush through it. When we rush through it, you're never going to get to two thirds of the vote. We're not going to have the input from the, uh, public that we need. Uh, this is, it, there is going to be very vocal opinions associated with this, and I think we're going to have to flush those out. Understand, just like we did with the ADU, uh, see if we can resolve them, go back and work on another draft, another draft, another draft. And then I think that's means more likely it's closer to a May town meeting next year than, than in the fall. Only because I, I think with the summer months coming up, I just don't see us being able to tackle this on a, on a more regular basis.
Okay, good. Thank you, Arthur. This is Catherine. I, I actually would agree with that. Bob Wirtschaft, how do you feel?
I totally agree with that. Um, I think there, it's too raw right now and we need to let it settle down a little bit and, and get back to some, you know, creative thinking and, and, and I mean, I, I honest, I agreed with Art and voted no because we hadn't seen it before. I thought there were some very minor issues with taking that needed to be addressed in the original, um, proposal that, uh, prevented me from voting yes. But I, I was going to vote yes, knowing that, that we had no chance of having it pass at town meeting. So, so I think we both have to get those corrections to satisfy us, but I think we have a lot more work if we think we're going to have something that can pass town meeting even, and that's going to not be possible in September, October.
Great. Okay, thank you, Bob. And again, I agree, um, and well stated. Um, Bob Dubus?
Yeah, Cap, uh, I don't believe that you, we can put anything together in, uh, six months. I think it'll take a little longer. But, uh, I'm, I'm going to ask a stupid question or not a stupid one, but a dumb one or one that I don't know the answer to is after all the town meeting we just went through and all the votes that were taken on the Airport Commission and stuff, we still have to go through this procedure to find, uh, a landing zone. I thought that was already remedied, uh, over this past town meeting.
What do you mean by a landing zone, Bob Dubus?
Well, the, the zone we're talking about.
The what? You mean the Runway Protection Zone?
Correct.
I think I, was that Katie who raised her hand?
No, it was, it was, it was Art Spru.
Arthur.
Yes. I think the issue that we settled at the town meeting was is that the RPZ was not going to go on airport property. That's all. The, so that means it's going to have some influence outside of the airport property. And now whatever you write in the bylaw is going to impact everything there. And that's what I think has to be flushed out a lot. I agree with Bob about that. There's properties that are split. I want to understand how do we go about protecting those properties so that they can develop them but not get harmed by it just because a slight corner gets included in the RPZ? That's not fair to that piece of property. I want to flush all of that out. I want to use examples. I want to uh, understand how we can craft this so that we don't penalize anybody who's not within it or is it partially within it? And that's going to take some work and patience and time.
Yeah.
Thank you, Art, for clearing that up for me a little bit.
Okay, great. Um, any other comments, Bob Dubus?
No, I, uh, I guess it's going to be a long haul next year.
Yeah, it, this, I, and I agree with Arthur. This is going to take some work. So Warren Chain?
Yeah, this is Warren. Um, first, I agree with Art, um, very strongly that the real issue for this board for the RPZ i- isn't whether it should happen because I think it's the only intelligent proposal that I've seen put forward, but rather how we, uh, can protect the homeowners who are in an RPZ from being disadvantaged, um, and disenfranchised even. Um, and at the same time, not run afoul of all of the requirements of zoning laws. You know, and having, uh, property specific zoning, for example. There's a dozen or so properties and the businesses that are there. We need to somehow or other have an RPZ, um, overlay district which somehow or other includes in it, uh, how, um, the properties that are already there, um, can be, um, their rights can be can be, their rights can be protected or explained and elaborated in the RPZ overlay overlay district zoning wording. And we had previously asked for some input on those subjects from Town Council as to how we might be able to do that. It seems to me to go there, but there's no way that this is gonna get pulled together in time to do something this fall. I'd add to it, it hadn't been mentioned yet, but that I believe pretty strongly that the citizenry of Chatham is never gonna go forward with only an RPZ overlay district zoning ordinance. Unless there is at the same time zoning that is being proposed for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. Because they're, you know, they're writing each other's back pockets. So unless people have an idea about, well, what happens when you go one foot outside the RPZ, that one. Because they know something coming. And so it seems to me we need to be prepared to have two, two proposals. One, we need to finish up what we think the draft zoning or the zoning proposal for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, including all of the issues which have yet to be resolved there, the biggest of which is density and how many bedrooms, et cetera. But that has to be meshed with the proposal on the RPZ overlay district because otherwise, you know, it's it's doomed to failure. So that just complicates our project even more and makes it even less realistic to do anything before the next town meeting in May.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Roger Griffin?
No, I feel I feel definitely feel the same way. We just we can't do this. We can't do this quickly and I I think we've been trying to do it quickly with several attempts and we can see it doesn't work. And I think Art is right. We have to flush out all the things that really should be part of this, like with Congress paying classes a sugar bill. I want to free the flies along with it. When we do when certain things shouldn't be done, we should be doing. But I think the things we do right, we need till spring. And I think as things do come up, I think we have to take each of those critical points and solve them, not just sort of put them on the table and go to the next one. Because we get further and further, but we really don't get anything done. I think we need to we need till next spring to get it to get it done correctly. But it's gonna take some extra time and it has to be done. Has to be done because I think a lot of people concerned with the airport, they also think that if we have to sync with the airport, that maybe it's gonna limit the airport. They think they're gonna escape density. And I think we have to realize that in life you can't escape anything. So we have it's time for us to deal with these issues. Yeah, I agree. Next spring, definitely.
Great. Okay, thank you. And this is Catherine. I certainly agree that we need at least to annual town meeting twenty twenty-three to go through this process and to come up with a version that will gain broad support from the community and that there's a lot of work to be done. And let's see, is that Roger? Yes.
I just have one question. And this is something I'd like to do. I would like to I would like to I would like to take a tour of the airport. I'd like to see Agnes Road from the runway. I'd like to see all the things you talk about. And I can't believe we've ever really decided to make any decisions. And I just think if I can't walk it, I can't see it, I can't feel it. I that's why we're not we don't go anywhere. We don't go anywhere. I want to know where the jet tanks are. I want to know all this baloney or minutia or facts or whatever it is. It's time. I want I and I know what we do as a group. I can do it by myself. I'm a citizen. I certainly have to the airport. I think it's necessary. I think assuming that.
Okay, good. All right. So we can schedule a walk, a site visit, site visit, so to speak. Yeah.
It would be great indication for all of us. I think it'd be very helpful. I do.
Good. Okay. So that's that's the next question I want to put to the Board. Maybe the first step, tonight, we we just wanted to have a brief, sort of a brief discussion of the matter and how we're gonna proceed. Maybe the next step should be that the Board that we include on our agenda a little bit more in-depth discussion about what steps we need to take to proceed. So we were thinking to schedule that for June twenty-seventh, for our June twenty-seventh meeting. So I just want to see what the Board members feel about that. One issue we want to keep in mind is that right now we we do not have a principal planner for the town of Chatham. They're still, you know, looking to replace Ally. So we could choose to wait until we have a new planner on board. Or we could at least have an initial discussion about how we want to proceed with this matter at our June twenty-seventh meeting. So can I hear how everyone feels about that? An initial discussion scheduled for June twenty-seventh, yes or no? Art?
Yeah. The twenty-seventh, yes, I I'm available.
Yes. And you think we should just go ahead and at least have an initial discussion on our agenda?
Oh, oh, yes. I I I still think that we're gonna have our own list of things that we're gonna have as a board. And I think it would be important that we identify some of those that we have. Roger's excellent idea about, you know, understanding a little bit more about the whole airport itself and what some of these pieces mean. And then we're gonna have to engage with the with the Airport Commission somehow and making sure that they're they're going to be supportive of some of the things that we're proposing to do. It's and again, if whether they are or aren't, we might still proceed in it the way we believe is going to be as reasonable as we can. So let's let's set up something for the twenty-seventh and flush things out as a first pass.
Okay, great. And how about other Board members? Bob Wurchafter, are you?
Yeah, I'm out.
Okay, and Roger? An initial discussion by the Planning Board?
I definitely that's the that's a great that's a great first time.
Okay, and Warren, yes?
Yeah, this is Warren. And I'm free on the twenty-seventh for that, but I continue to be frustrated by the lack of an ability for us to get together and just sort of have a a think tank, sort of, you know, working group kind of a session, just throw things out, talk about them and not run afoul of public meeting laws. You know, there's there's a few key issues here, and we need to come up with some answers as to what options might be there to deal with them. And then we need to get them pulled, you know, pulled together in a draft. And those are the kinds of things which are best done in small groups, not not public hearings and, you know, not even on our June twenty-seventh meeting. We can't just sort of have it on the agenda and then start asking questions that don't get answered in the meeting and then, you know, then you're a month later before you can get back to it again. Especially the the RPZ or the Runway Overlay District is one that I think would lend itself well to working in a working session with ourselves and then with the Airport Commission. Because I I I do think that the issues that we are aware of have answers or the best compromises. And we need to identify them and get them get them into writing quickly so they can get chewed on. And I I just find that our ability to do it in no form other than on our our bi-weekly meetings just doesn't get the ball down the field very well. Sorry for the sports analogies, but work sessions, if it's possible, maybe we get together with a, you know, just a couple of people. Maybe there's somebody in charge of coming up with ideas and it's out of the public meeting laws sphere and then that they bring their output to our meetings on the twenty-seventh, for example. But some way to get some ideas out there other than at our bi-weekly meetings. It just it's just frustrating because I it's 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 a slow enough process once we've got something we all agree on and want to figure out how to move forward. But we can't seem to find a way to efficiently get ideas on the table for us to consider internally. So just a comment.
So Judy?
I guess my suggestion would be, I think we I think the visit. I think if we took a tour, took a visit with the airport, I think we could cut down with any of the questions. I would say that's probably the I think that's the first thing we have to do was I think we as a group would probably come out of there and probably not say answer all the questions, but we would have a far better handle what we're doing.
Katie, I see your Katie, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what Warren is suggesting, a sub-working group would still need to meet the open meeting law requirements. They the meetings still need to be posted, minutes still need to be taken for any meeting such as that. Now, we can certainly schedule a separate work session that would be just this topic if the if the Board members would like to do that and spend specific, you know, a specific amount of time, you know, say set aside two or three hours in one session to talk about the concerns. I, you know, whether or not the 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 place to start is from the bylaw that was submitted initially, that's probably a good place for the Board to start. And then to, you know, individually look and make comments and then bring them back, their comments back to the entire group. And then we move forward from there because no matter whether it's, you know, two people or or more, any sub, any working group will need to be posted and minutes taken. So and made available to the public.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Yes, we have in the past on the Planning Board had subcommittees to work on a particular task. But as Katie has mentioned, we did have to post the meeting. We had to record it or broadcast it and have minutes just in the same way as a regular staff meeting. And then the results of the subcommittee meeting needed to be presented to the entire Board. In this particular case, if I could offer my opinion, I think if we feel we need to schedule additional meetings in addition to our bi-weekly regular meetings to be working sessions on the RPZ Overlay District bylaw, I think we could do that. But for this particular matter, I actually think it's more productive to have it be the entire Board meeting rather than a subcommittee. But we could we could schedule additional working sessions. We've also done that in the past for long-range planning issues for the Planning Board because it does require a lot of time. We've scheduled additional meetings outside of our regular two meetings per month. So that's what I would suggest, but that we still meet as a full Board. And we will, it will be that we will need to meet together with the Airport Commission and with Town Council again, probably with the FAA Consultant to the Airport Commission, Matt Karen, to answer questions, to get more information, to vet some ideas or suggestions that have come up. So we will need to also schedule those joint meetings. But in this particular case, I think it's better for the Planning Board to meet as a whole, even if we do a working session. I think maybe the best place to start, I will continue to say, why don't we at least? We didn't really allow for a long discussion for tonight. The June twenty-seventh discussion, we can go a little more in depth, what our concerns are as a Board. And we can at least try to identify what the concerns are that we want to bring into the process. And then we can maybe set a plan for a site visit for getting more information from Town Council or from the FAA Consultant Matt Karen or for a joint meeting with the Airport Commission. But I think taking the step of having an initial discussion at our regular June twenty-seventh meeting might be a good first step. And it's just a first step to help define our our plan of action a little more clearly and our questions and concerns a little more clearly. So why don't we go ahead with that? And?
Yeah.
I guess I don't, you know, Catherine, I guess on that, I guess I don't know. I sometimes I think if we do that, I don't mean the way it sounds, but it has a whole new spin and it's you know, the sun crying, it just gets so out of control. I I really, truly, just watching what's been going on the past year. I think we should start with a site visit. I think we could probably become out of it better educated or maybe I don't know. I I think I think the site visit would, I think we need, this is not like looking at our bylaws with it's this wide, it's this high, and let's make sure it doesn't have to a drainage problem. This is, this is, we're all frustrated. I think I think we I think we need a site meeting for us to tour the airport. Yes, we'll probably come out with many of our questions or maybe if we came out of there with half, only half of the concerns we had when we went in, we're ahead of the game, we would be feeling just would would be, you know, with a lot off our mind. I think the visits are comparative. I think that's where we start. That's my that's my opinion. Obviously, I'm not, I don't, you know, I'm not not the total board, but I think it's I think it's that imperative. I think we get, we would gain that much more knowledge. That's my opinion.
Let me see what the other Board members feel, Roger, whether we should do a site visit to the airport before we have an initial discussion on June twenty-seven.
Catherine, I I I agree that we need a site visit, but I think Roger's envisioning a site visit where we all get together and talk about our questions and that you can't do that.
No, I know that. I know.
I mean.
Let's just hear the Board's opinion. Hold on.
I I think we, I mean, I'm not sure it's the first thing that we need to do. Like, we need to go back over the plan and and find out where the what holes we we want to address.
Okay, thank you. And Arthur, how do you feel?
Sorry, one more thing. I'm I'm not, to be perfectly honest, I'm not sure I have the bandwidth to to ramp this up at the same time that I'm overseeing the Chatham's address dressing of climate change as a as a future issue. They're both very big consuming issues. So if you choose to have extra Board meetings, I'm not, I can tell you right now, I might have trouble attending them all.
All right. So that but that's something that we'll consider as we go forward. We haven't come to any decision about that yet.
I'm just letting you know, you you don't have free rein to start scheduling every every two weeks.
Yes.
Me to be there, so.
Yes, so I get it. Thank you. So the only question now is, Arthur, do you think we need the site visit before the initial discussion on the twenty-seventh?
I think I think Bob Wurchafter, he brings up a good point. I I think we have to flush things out first. And then when we go to the site visit, we'll be a little bit better prepared on it because it's not, it's not just to be a site visit at the airport. It's also a site visit to see the properties in that. I think we need to have a plan layout in front of us. I think we have to identify the ones that are within the the RPZ, the ones that are split. All of those are gonna be a little bit different and it's it's not going to be one that you just go to one spot and that's it. It's there's a lot more to it. So I think we need to do some due diligence in advance. I think Bob's suggestion makes a little bit more sense in this case. I also agree with Bob's point about why all of a sudden does this circumvent everything else that we've been doing? Reprioritizing? I don't know. This this was shoved forward in advance of everything else that we've been doing for a considerable amount of time, and I don't want to sidetrack some of those things. I agree with Warren that we need to do this in parallel with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. I think the two of them dovetail together so that when you when you pass one with the RPZ and whatever that says, there is an under, there's an underlying plan of what we're actually doing for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. Are we proposing to do, you know, affordable housing and and where would that be? And how restrictive would that be? I I think the two of them work together. So I I don't think that this needs to circumvent or prioritize over some of the other things. I think it will happen when it happens. And if it takes longer, then it takes longer. That's just my point of view.
Okay, thank you, Arthur. So Bob Dubus, are you okay with an initial discussion on the twenty-seventh without a site visit first?
Yeah, I'm all right with that.
Okay. And Warren Chain?
I'm okay with that, sure.
Okay, so Roger, I think in general, the board wants to do an initial discussion and we'll see, we'll see how we go ahead from there.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
I'm good.
Great. So, so, so at the moment, we'll look at putting it on our agenda to have an initial discussion. We'll look at the draft that was presented and we'll start from there. And we'll just begin to define the issues, define the questions and define our course of action moving forward. And Katie, I see your hands up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things. One, I just wanted to confirm with the board that you want the initial to discussion to be the planning board only and not members of the Airport Commission or Town Council? Or would you like members of the Airport Commission or Town Council at that first initial meeting? I just, I just want to make sure I, before I request their presence.
Yeah. This is Catherine. I personally think it would be useful for the planning board to consider this as a planning board without the Airport Commission. It might be useful to have Town Council present. That would be my opinion. Arthur, what is your thought on this?
Yeah, our board first without the Airport Commission give us time to digest whatever was proposed before. I don't think we really have a chance to really digest it. Whether Town Council is there or not, that, that's, you know, your call on what do you think that that's warranted? It might be premature, but I can understand why there could be some statements made by Town Council that would sort of guide us a little bit better in certain aspects of this. But quite frankly, it wouldn't bother me a bit if we venture into new territory here. This airport's been there for 70 years and now all of a sudden we're going to do something that is, is, goes back to what it was 70 years ago. I, I'm not sure that that's realistic. So we may be venturing into new territory and it wouldn't bother me a bit if that's what we were doing.
Okay, Bob Wurchafter, do you feel it should be just the planning board at our initial discussion?
I think so. I think it's just simpler that way. There's enough to talk about.
And would you find it useful to have Town Council?
I, I mean, I, I think the question about taking that, that concerned me. He did already answer that for us. So I, I'm not sure I have any additional issues that that have to be answered on the spot.
Okay, yes. Okay, and Bob Dupus? Bob Dupus, are you okay with planning board alone discussion on the 27th?
I would think that would be the best for, for us to meet by ourselves and discuss everything. Get it over with. And then any questions we had, we could direct the questions to the right places.
Okay, that sounds good. Warren Chain?
With respect to Town Council, I guess it would be lovely to have, have him present. I have lots of questions that I think he could have some input on, but I also don't think that, given that we're just starting to ramp up here, that it would be a good use of his time to spend at our entire.
Okay.
Think that if we can crisply come up with some issues to forward on to Town Council at our session, that would be the best approach. And I certainly think the Airport Commission would be a useful contributor to our next meeting and discussion on this.
Good. Okay, I think that's a good approach, Roger. Are you all right with that? Our first initial discussion will be planning board. Yes. And I, I agree. I think it's a good approach. I've worked with planning boards where Town Council was present at every meeting. And, you know, it's wonderful if we could do that, but I agree that we could probably formulate some questions and issues to forward to Town Council. So, great.
Thing I wanted to mention, Madam Chair, is that there is a member of the public with their hand up. I wasn't sure if you could see that, so I just wanted to make sure you, you were aware.
Thank you so much. I do see that. I don't see any way to identify that person. There's no initials or anything. So.
Identified as guest.
As guest, yes. So.
Hello?
Yes, please go ahead. Please go ahead and please identify yourself.
I'm not sure I was allowed. Yes, this is Ronald Mazzarri calling.
Yes.
I just want, I just had one question. When you have your review of the airport, when you have, when you walk, have a walkthrough, I guess, of the airport, will that be open to the public so that I could participate on that?
I'm going to have to refer that question to Katie.
Typically tight sidewalks are advertised, but it is up to typically a property owner whether or not, whether or not the public would be allowed. I don't see, in this instance, we would have to check with the, with the airport manager from, for that property. But, you know, certainly there are other properties or other areas the board may be looking at that may, you know, that, that it may not be an issue. I'm not saying it will be an issue at the airport. I just want to make sure. I don't, I don't want to say that, you know, that, that everybody's.
I mean, I would, oh, thank you. I would like to be, be part of that when you do have your walk, when you have your review of the airport, if that's possible.
We can certainly keep you involved, informed, Mr. Mazzarri.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public?
Yes.
All right, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, I can only get on if I say guest and not put my initials.
All right.
I, I guess I'm, I'm surprised that you want to postpone this until the annual town meeting. And the reason I say that is that you're gonna delay your ability to work on the rest of the corridor and get going what you want to. There, there was a misconception from the beginning where some people conflated displaced thresholds with the RPZ. That is basically for new airports when they, you know, you're opening up and it's nice if you own the, the entire airport. I think Bob made a reference to it. It was defeated at town meeting, the displaced thresholds for safety reasons, et cetera. And it would have been rejected by the FAA. The RPZ is defined by the FAA. It is not arbitrary. The, the dimensions have been provided. It cannot move. That is the way it is for the class of airports. And I think what was missed is that even if you decide you don't want to go through and do an overlay, or even if it were defeated at town meeting, it still exists. The Airport Commission is not the sponsor here of this. They're not the ones driving it. They were simply the messengers. They were simply informing the board because the, the town boards had never been informed before that RPCs exist. So it was a high learning curve, I admit. But you have to understand that you can't build in that area. However, the properties are protected that are already there. They're just like state law protects them. They are pre-existing non-conforming laws and they can still do things with their property. What the RPC does is says you cannot increase density. And so I would hope that you would want to try and get it to special town meeting so you can get those questions answered so that you can move forward with redefining areas within the West Chatham Corridor that you may want to add areas to, to take up the, the places where you can increase density so that they could both, you would already know what you're dealing with with the RPC at special town meeting, and then you can move forward redesigning the corridor based on that by expanding it if necessary so that you can do affordable housing. But even if it, it, you, you still have to comply with the FAA, whether or not you codify it. And that's all this is doing is just putting it in writing for future boards to understand that it is exists so that 10 years from now, when you're all gone, the next board doesn't say, what's an RPZ? They will know. It's there. It's simply codified. And every lawyer, you know, who has spoken on behalf of the FAA, Town Council, Matt Karen's people have all said that despite the fact that there is no bylaw that says it, it still applies. We have a contract with the federal government. We've taken money. And that says we must follow, follow their circular in terms of not increasing density. So I would hope you do it at least in parallel, and I would urge you to try and get it done for special town meeting. I think it got really confused and off track with all kinds of issues that really are not issues. I think they can be dealt with very easily. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Elaine. Any other comments from the public? There was one other matter under Chairman's comments that I just wanted to bring up to the board. We are still meeting completely remotely. We just wanted to think, this was brought up before by a couple of the board members, whether we wanted to change over to a hybrid meeting format where we would meet in person as well as remotely. And just a reminder that if we do change to the hybrid format, it does mean that members of the public can join the meeting in person. And there's no particular guideline in that case regarding masks or social distancing at this time. So that is, so those are our choices. We could continue to be completely remote as we have been. Or we could move to the hybrid in-person and remote meeting format. But it does mean that, that everyone can come in person. So I just want to see how the board feels about this. Maybe we can just go through each board member. Art Spru, what are your feelings about our meeting format at this time?
Well, I may imagine that I'd like to get to a hybrid at least on this. I, I'm, I'm still meeting with the CPC. We started meeting last month as in-person, and I have another meeting in June with CPC in-person. So I believe other boards and committees are starting to do this now, so I'm supportive of it. If there is a concern, if we go with a hybrid, then individuals could attend remotely if they so desire.
Yes. Okay, Warren?
Yeah, this is Warren. I mean, a month ago, I would have said at this meeting, I would be very much in favor of nothing but face-to-face meetings. But every time I see the main sheet from the town manager, you know, the, plus what I know from my work in CERT, all the trends are definitely in the wrong direction and we're, we're, you know, among the very high-risk towns in a very high-risk county. So I, I guess I would not want to have only face-to-face meetings. If there's a way to have a hybrid where you could have face-to-face but choose to participate remotely, then I think that's what we, we should do because we, we really got to get back to talking to each other face-to-face. I mean, this is getting ridiculous here. But at the moment, as they say, if you're just looking at the number of people that are catching COVID, I don't know about you, but every name, time I talk to a new neighbor, they've got family, they've got friends, they've got people in their office, everybody's sick. And so I don't think we need to help participate in that. So if hybrid is now permitted, I know for one time that was not permitted. You had to be either face-to-face or, or not. But if it's permitted, that's what I'd be in favor of, but not eliminating the option to be remote.
The way, this is Catherine, the way I understand it. And Katie will correct me if I'm wrong, but what's actually not permitted is exclusively in-person. Now, we have to always allow the possibility of remote connection. So we can choose a hybrid format, which means we would meet in person, but there would still be the possibility for people to connect remotely. Katie, is that correct?
Actually, Madam Chair, all three are actually allowed. There are some boards that don't offer a hybrid option, but they do meet, you know, in-person only. So if we were meeting as a regulatory board, my suggestion would be that it would be a hybrid format in the large meeting room where it would be televised live as all of your meetings are and that, that there would be a, a remote option for people who didn't want to attend in person. So I think, and, and that is in effect until July 15th. So you, you're allowed to either meet remotely or hybrid until July 15th. And at which point in time they could further, you know, the, the state could further extend that option. But at this point in time, I believe it's until July 15th.
And then after July 15th, is it in-person only?
I believe we can offer a hybrid option, but I don't know that the, it's the quorum requirements that may not is, is what we have to be concerned with. So I think we can always offer a hybrid option for others to be, you know, to participate in the meeting, but to make the quorum and have, you know, have the participating, participating members all voting. I think, I think that that's what's really the question about what needs to be extended.
All right, great. Thank you for clarifying that. So Roger, do you prefer to stay remote or do you want to move to a hybrid format?
Well, as Warren had said, I think I, three weeks ago, I was more, with last time we talked, I was more than ready and thought we would be right now. But, you know, right now I'm getting concerned because here with this summer and we've got grandchildren coming down as young as 11 months. And, you know, hey, you know, we've missed, we've missed three summers already. I think I'd have to say, you know, family first. I think at this point, I just, I don't want to sit there and say, gee, guys, I guess we'll see you again next year. So I guess, no, I, it's family first. I, I would have to be, now I really feel I have to be remote.
So you want to stay remote only or do you want to move?
I think I would have, I think I'd have to for a couple of months because I think you see the, the numbers are jumping. I even know some couple, two people in Chatham that, you know, the, the day before lasted, they came down. It was surprising that they had it and over, but it's like, it's happening so quick. There's more people that didn't even realize I, why they didn't do this, they didn't do that. Yeah, a little concerned right now. I didn't think, didn't think I would be, but yeah, I am right now.
So, and Katie, let me just ask you, if we move right now to a hybrid format, does that mean that all planning board members must be in-person? Or could planning board members be remote?
At least, I would expect that at least a couple of members would be in-person. You know, others could be remote, but I would expect that we would at least have some members in the room. Otherwise, we may just, we might as well just stay fully remote at this point in time.
Fully remote. Okay, great.
If, if, if people are not comfortable coming into the meeting room. And, and, you know, we can certainly revisit this on a month-to-month basis if the numbers come down next month, you know, maybe, you know, or, you know, if the, if the order is not extended beyond July 15th, would be back in person for the second meeting in July anyway, so.
Right. It's not that long a time. It's just, you know, two months, basically. So.
This is Warren again. I, I would propose that we just extend what we did a month ago through the end of June and just meet remotely until then. And we'll see how the trend lines go and how many people are in the hospital.
All right. I would, I would agree to that. So we'll just stay fully remote through the end of June. Do any board members object to that? Maybe that?
No.
No, it's okay with me.
All right. Bob Dupus, are you okay with that?
Considering 20, 20, 30,000 people are going to ascend on our town in about two and a half to three weeks. I'm kind of, I'm pretty sure I'm okay where I'm at.
Okay, great. Great. So we'll continue remotely through the end of June and then we'll reevaluate. And we'll also see what happens with the change of the order on July 15. Okay, great. So if there's no other comments from board members, no other comments from the public, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move, move to adjourn, please.
And may I have a second to that motion?
I move to a second.
Great. All right. Art Spru?
Art Spru approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
Bob Wurchafter approve.
Bob Dupus?
Bob Dupus more than approves.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain approve.
And Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approve.
And this is Catherine Hopper, and I also approve that we adjourn the meeting. Let's note the time as 7:05 PM. And thank you, everyone, for your participation and enjoy. And thank you, everyone, for your participation and enjoy.